Okay, at 6:30, we call this regular session of the Chavano Park City Council to order. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Maggie Kautz and Buddy Alaman will lead us in the invocation. If you'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to call people together in support of our community. We thank you for each and everyone who is present here today. You have blessed us with supportive stewards who seek what is best for our community. We thank most of all for being here in our midst. Dear God, help us apply your wisdom as we decide on certain matters today. Let your presence be made known and lead us through the decisions we will make. This we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Item number three, citizens to be heard. There being no citizens to be heard brings us to item number four, city council comments. Buddy?
Welcome, everyone.
Maggie?
Glad to see everyone here this evening.
Conrad?
Good to see everyone.
Pete?
Yeah, Dino, welcome to see everyone.
Lee?
Welcome.
I appreciate the brevity with which every one of our council members has spoken this evening. Item number five, presentation, commentations, and announcements. Item 5.1, recognition, excellence in performance by a city employee, 2025, second quarter Employee of the Quarter recipient, firefighter, paramedic, Rolando Rowley Salinas. Chief, this is one of our favorite items as council, is the recognition of our fine staff that we have here. Your department and the others are to be commended for the efforts that you put forth on behalf of all of our citizens, and it is our pleasure this evening for you to recognize Rolando.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. I take great pleasure in bringing Rowley in front of you guys. As some of you may remember, in May of last year, we recognized firefighter, paramedic, Rolando, or as we know him, Rowley Salinas for completing and passing his National Registry Paramedic Training and Certification. At that time, I was very proud to say that Rowley had taken the initiative to do this training on his own, had sought out a funding opportunity, he was able to take advantage of state-funded grant. Literally, the only thing that it cost the city was Rowley's time off, and we were able to mitigate that and manage that in-house. Since then, Rowley completed that, and we recognized him in May of last year for that extraordinary work. As I mentioned then, the paramedic training is a rigorous, rigorous class. It takes a year. You spend time in the emergency room, you spend time at the hospital, you spend time riding with San Antonio EMS, developing those skills that he's brought back now to our city. It was certainly no small feat. And today, I'd like to recognize firefighter Salinas for Employee of the Quarter for his outstanding work that he does every day and the extra steps that he's taken to support both our department and the community. Not only is Rowley reliable and a skilled paramedic, he's always stepping up in tough calls and showing genuine care for patients, but he's also volunteered to join the Joint Police and Fire Honor Guard. That kind of commitment says a lot about his character and the pride in what he does. Since joining the Honor Guard, Rowley has represented our department at memorials, community events, special ceremonies, helping honor those who served before us. This commitment takes extra time, training, and dedication, and Rowley never hesitates to show up and give it his all. Additionally, Rowley's positive attitude, professionalism, and willingness to go to the extra mile in the day-to-day operations of the department makes him a great example to the others, and I truly believe that he deserves to be recognized for his hard work and dedication to the city.
Good job.
Yeah, we're gonna call you up here with your fiancee in just a second, but I just also wanted to say that you've got a great reputation across the entire city, and so it's not just everything that Chief said, but you really do. And the thing about it that impresses me is that not very many people have an attitude of learning and improving every day. But you've proven that. You just are not good with just status quo. You seek to even get better and improve. So with that, if you'll come up here.
Just want to side note.
Okay, so I'm gonna present you this coin which says, Commitment to Excellence, City Chavano Park, and a job well done, well deserved.
We want to shake his hand. Chief, there we go. We want to shake your hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I know that the city council meetings are extremely entertaining and that the fire department personnel are looking forward to staying for the next hour to six, but y'all are all invited to leave at any time that y'all would like to. Thank y'all for coming over and being here with Rowley today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great work.
Item 5.2, National Payroll Week. There's probably no better day for the workers in America than the day that payroll comes. And we are very blessed to have the payroll organization which represents 20,000 members, delivering payrolls to 150 million Americans, and paying out about $2.4 trillion in wages every year. Payday comes. It's happy days for everybody, and we appreciate the fact that the payroll organization stepped up and said, it is important that we recognize these payroll professionals. It is our privilege and our pleasure to provide a proclamation for September the 1st through the 5th of 2025 as National Payroll Week in the city of Chavano Park. Mark, if you and Kelly would come forward, Maggie and I are gonna come forward as well to present you this proclamation.
Maggie, you want to, you are hooking up with Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're basically our residents of Chavano Park, so that's even better.
Thank you for being a resident of Chavano Park. Kelly, you too.
Yeah, I'm a resident.
Thank you so much.
And Mark, thank you so much for coming. I'm just really sitting here.
Yes, thank you so much.
And we'll see you.
This brings us to item number six, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately at the end of the regular agenda. Do we have a motion to approve and/or accept items 6.1 through 6.5?
Second.
We have a second from Lee, and I mean, a motion from Lee and a second from Conrad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item number seven, City Manager's Report. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Consent with each item listed, discussion will generally occur at the end of the regular agenda. Anybody wish to pull any of items 7.1 through 7.6? There being the request. It brings us to item number eight, Regular Agenda Items. Item 8.1, Discussion/Action/Additional Service Request, four on the Days of Allah Project, Phase 1B for Colliers Engineering. Bill and Chris. Bill, do you want to start us out?
Yeah, I'll start us out. This is the fourth additional service. It's called Additional Service Request for the engineers, for the engineer support of our Phase 1 project. Includes part of the Phase 1 Bravo and Phase 1 Charlie. The big part of this is the quality assurance with the, you know, the quality assurance with the geo-tech testing. Chris is here, he can explain that. It's the component, it's made up of four different items, but I think we have a chart on that.
Yeah, so as Bill mentioned, this is ASR number four. On the screen, you can see the previous ASRs that have been approved. Number four is for the Quality Assurance Geo-Technical Construction Material Testing, or CMT, and then also the Additional Construction Administration that's necessary for the change of scope that occurred in ASR 1 and ASR 2. Next slide. And so these are the four different tasks that are associated with that. The first one is the CMT, or the Construction Material Testing from Teracon. That is performed on an as-needed basis, so as the inspector calls out for QA testing, they will charge against that $38,900. And then also, the task two is our coordination with Teracon when necessary for the CMT. Typically, that's gonna come up, there's a discrepancy between the QC testing performed by the contractor and the QA testing performed by Teracon. And then 4.3 is the Construction Administration. When we did the original ASRs to change the scope of the project, we were focused on design, and we did not account for the additional construction administration that was gonna be required, and so this brings that up to where it should be. And then lastly, is the driveway plats. There are a couple of locations, I believe we spoke about this before, where the, because we're lowering Days of Allah, we have to make some adjustments to the driveways inside private property, and so the driveway plats are just documents that we give to the homeowners, that they sign, that give us the authority to go onto their property and make those driveway improvements so they have a smooth transition into their driveways.
Thank you, Chris. Bill, does any of this have, does any of this relate to changes that were made in the construction that's going to go along Days of Allah during the next two weeks, where we will be closing Days of Allah down for part of the day?
Well, not directly. This part of, that part of the project, the engineer services have already been accounted for.
And so, within the scope of this item, can, Chris, can you describe what we're gonna be doing for the next two weeks on Days of Allah?
Yeah, so for the next two weeks on Days of Allah, we're actually gonna shut down Days of Allah so that the contractor can work faster. They have already started the trenching operation for the storm sewer. It's actually a two-part process, it's actually a three-part process, but the trencher that they brought out is four foot wide. The trench that they need is eight to nine feet wide, and so they're gonna make two passes with that trencher. In the first couple of days of trenching, they, I don't wanna say they ran into issues, but it's very limited space which is slowing them down dramatically, and so if we shut down Days of Allah to through traffic, that will allow them to work more quickly, so they can get their first pass done and then come back, and especially on the second pass is when we really need to close it, then get that second pass completed faster. So it will be closed to through traffic. Local traffic will still be able to get to, you know, Days of Allah Place. Bikeway, you're probably better off going to Elm Springs, but that's the general plan. Hours of closure will be 7:00 AM.
7:00 AM, 7:00 PM. And I will tell you, we've already coordinated with the U.S. Postal Service, Republic Trash Services, NISD for the schools, the Homeowners Association, the residents that are directly affected, VIA and the CAD, which is really working through Bear County Sheriff's Office, the San Antonio Police Department and Fire Department.
Okay, and so we're shutting this down because of the spoil, and we're going to move the spoil to where it doesn't go into yards, or we're, what are we doing exactly that we're shutting the road down for?
Yeah, so in the first couple of days of trenching, the spoil materials were actually going into private property as they spilled out the side of the machine, and so by opening this up, they can redirect it. I believe they're going directly into a truck or onto the side of the road.
Probably the side of the road.
But either way, it allows them to work without impacting private property.
Okay, sounds like a good idea. Do we have a motion to approve the Additional Service Request, number four, for $97,630 for Phase 1B engineering?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion. Does anybody else have any questions that might pertain to the engineering and the changes that are taking place right now? Pete?
No questions, just a comment. One of the things I'd like to commend both you and Bill for hosting the advisory committee. You know, I've never done a project when everything goes smoothly, and it's always a good idea to recheck, make sure things are going right, and make adjustments as you go along. And just thank you for the time and effort that you've put into the committee, making sure that we've listened to their voices and making these adjustments as we go along.
Thank you, Pete. Anybody else? Buddy?
Bill, this money was already worked out in the budget, or is this an addition?
This is an addition. And so, you know, we're conscious of trying not to let that mission creep go over. So this will be almost $100,000. There's a little over $10,000 that we've put those water barriers in so people won't drive off the ridge. And then there's a pending change order for putting a one-foot flowable fill concrete, basically a layer between that and the compacted stuff and the asphalt in order to prevent caving in of this. So that's a pending thing, but, so what we don't want is, you know, we'll do what we have to do. Right now, it's reasonable, and we're working through, and we still have the flexibility, we think, to do all the things that we've programmed and promised to do. So we're on track.
Okay. Bill, Buddy had a great question there about, you know, now we're another $100,000 in on this project. Do you have any idea what the flow improvement is going to cost? You know, we put the box cover down, we put the spoil on top of that, or whatever goes on top of that, and then we put the concrete cap on top of it, and then the asphalt, and...
We're gonna get some cost savings by not doing, having to do some of the things we had to do, and then there's some cost added. The contractor told me today approximately $30,000, but we haven't seen the actual numbers.
Okay.
And the other thing that I would just ask Chris, you know, the 38.9 is a plan. You multiplied that by 1.2 to get 46, but if we don't use but $20,000 of that, you know, I don't know. Then it won't cost us that full amount.
Yeah, the Teracon scope is on a per-task basis, so if they're called out to do density tests, there's a charge for density tests. And so, like on Phase 1 Alpha, I think it was 70% of the Teracon budget actually got used. It might have been less than that for actual CMT. And then when we had those cracks develop, that's when, you know, we really burned through the rest of that budget. But this, I believe, is a conservative number. I don't see us going over unless something severely goes sideways in the project. We won't go over this.
Okay. Buddy, did that cover everything? Okay. There being no further questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 8.2, Discussion/Action Ordinance O. 2025-010, Amending Appendix A Fee Schedule to the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to Provide Updated Administrative Building Permit and Emergency Medical Fee. This is a final reading. Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, yes, this is, if you recall, back in July, a little hot there, we reviewed this for the first reading, so I'm only gonna cover the changes that we made. Since then, there's only a couple that we made, but I'm happy to go through any of the other slides of material presented last month if you have further questions. So, under administrative fees, we said in the meeting, it is, it's deleted, this delinquent payment collections fee, that's gone out of the ordinance, deleted. Highlight in yellow there. On the residential permit fees, from guidance from council in the first reading, the fence, the proposed increase to the fence and roof residential permit fees were dropped. Those are deleted, they're back to their, what they are today, which would be $100 for fence, $150 for roof. So those were both dropped. And then EMS fees is where we had the biggest change. If you remember, it was suggested for city council that the non-resident fee should match what San Antonio charges. We originally were going with that plan and just moving, instead of doing the averages for the non-residents, but then doing some more research, our fire chief actually pinged us on this, that, oh, there's a state law that limits it a 10% increase year-over-year. So, these new numbers that you see highlighting in yellow for all of them is a 10% on all these. And so what that really looks like is what we previously were gonna do is here on the right, on my right, and then on the left here is a new proposal, and you can see the changes. So it's five less dollars for a resident response with a 10% rather than what we were gonna plan on doing, $345 less a non-resident, so on and so forth. You can see in red there, the changes. So, this state law was renewed by the Texas Legislature for another two years, and this SB 916, I think, we were just looking this afternoon, so this is something we'll have to contend with moving forward. And they added this where now you can't raise it beyond this Medicare ambulance inflationary rate. So, I just was talking with Darrell, I think there's something that every year we need to look at. What is this Medicare inflationary rate? What are our numbers? And do that analysis moving forward.
Thank you, Curtis. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance O. 2025-010, Amending Appendix A Fee Schedule for the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to Establish Updated Administrative Building Permit and Emergency Medical Fees?
So moved.
We have a motion from Maggie. We have a second from Pete. We're open for discussion. Any discussion? Lee? Oh, there was a second from Lee. Okay. Do we have any comments? Bill, you'll calendar this for the August/September timeframe next year to include the increase on the EMS?
Absolutely.
Okay, so this will be coming back because of the 10% limitation and whatever the state of Texas has done. There being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Curtis. Item 8.3, Discussion/Action Ordinance O. 2025-011, Amending Chapter 20, Article 3 of the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to Provide Clear Standards for Defining and Measuring Noise Ordinances. This is a first reading. Curtis?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, if you recall, we presented this at the July meeting, and it was tabled for further discussion. We had a lot of discussion on whether or not the noise, the DBA levels that we were first time proposing to establish the ordinance were the correct levels. Highlighting yellow there, the only changes from what you last looked at. We moved it back to the San Antonio 70 and 63. We had 63 commercial, 55 residential, and that proposed you saw in July. The only other thing I'll add to that is we were looking at Alamo Heights' proposed ordinance, but when we were working on this back in June, but their city council actually adopted it, and now it's in force, and it's a reinforcer to me that the 70 and the 63 is right, because Alamo Heights had 70 commercial, 63 residential, just like City of San Antonio. Again, I'm happy to run through all the slides I went through, again, if you'd like, but that's the only change that we made from July. Otherwise, everything else I presented is the same.
Okay. Curtis, we'll hold on that, and we'll let council ask questions to probe into the presentation that you previously made, if there's no objection to that. There being no objection. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance O. 2025-011, Amending Chapter 20, Article 3 of the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to Provide Clear Standards for Defining and Measuring Noise nuisances. Pete?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. Lee?
You mentioned Alamo Heights. Did they not have something special in theirs about lawn equipment? Was there times involved in that? I have not read Alamo Heights ordinances.
Did they, yes, they had some, they called out lawn equipment specifically. Our ordinance just calls them internal combustion motors, and that would include weed whackers, leaf blowers, and their operations in our proposed ordinance used to be 7 to 7. We changed it 7 to sunset. So, because 7 o'clock is in the daytime right now.
Is the term "internal combustion engine" or ICE, is that specifically in the ordinance?
Yes.
And soloed, right?
Yes. I think it's miniature or small.
Right.
Yes, it's not a car engine.
No.
It's a small.
Anything under 1,000 cc's. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, there being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Curtis. Brings us to item 8.5, Discussion/Action Resolution R. 2025-009, Amending City Policy Number 2 Budget Adjustments and Purchasing Policy to Authorize An Increase For The Maximum Requirement For Open Bidding From $50,000 To $100,000 In accordance With State Law. Bill?
Yes, Mayor and Council. So, Senate Bill 1173 of the 89th Texas Legislature became effective in September, and the bottom line is it amended the local government code to increase the minimum requirement for a formal bidding, competitive bidding from $50,000 to $100,000. So we competitively bid almost every single contract or action that we do. And we have internal procedures and policies for that, but when you start talking about what Texas law requires you to do over $50,000, there is, it's quite extensive. You have to put public notice in papers, there's a timeline to do this, it's quite cumbersome. They've relaxed that a bit by changing the threshold of all those formal competitive requirements, bidding requirements, to $100,000. So, you know, most every city I know is adopting this month an update, which just makes us, makes it easier for us. It doesn't really change, in my mind, the outcome of what we're doing and how we're doing it, other than the bureaucratic requirement. We still seek out bidders, and the more bidders we get, the better, because we typically have a, you know, not a bidding war, but you get more competitive things. So, what we've done on this agenda item and the next agenda item is, for the most part, just simply crossed out $50,000 and added $100,000. There were some other additional things that occurred. We had dollar and cents signs, and we don't really need the .00 cents on any of these, it just makes it confusing. And the other thing that we did was we changed the language to where we called it Formal Competitive Bid Process, which is the $100,000, whereas less than that, it's just a written competitive bid requirement. When you take a look at the actual Senate bill, it just says competitive bids, but everything is competitive, so it's not very specific. We tried to delineate in our ordinance and our policy the difference between competitive bids and formal competitive bids, where you have to take an extra step, and we added that language for clarification for us. Is there another slide? What?
No.
So that's it. It's a very simple ordinance. Really nothing else associated with that. I think there was a, there was another change where previously there was some language authorizing the city manager to approve budgets greater than, up to $50,000, and that was changed in one of the tables, but not in the ordinance, so we just made it consistent to its $50,000. Of course, council has to approve those anyway up to that amount, and so typically you do that through the budget amendments, and then we come to you frequently to be able to do that, but that gives us authorization. If it's already approved in a budget, then we can go from there.
Okay. Couple of questions before I entertain a motion, Bill. Council can always use a lower number if they said, hey, we're doing X, and it's $75,000. We want to follow the state of Texas formal competitive bid process.
council has to approve those anyway up to that amount. And so typically you do that through the budget amendments and then we come to you frequently to be able to do that, but that gives us authorization. If it's already approved in a budget, then we can go from there.
Okay, a couple of questions before I entertain a motion, Bill. Council can always use a lower number if they said, hey, we're doing X and it's $75,000. We want to follow the state of Texas formal competitive bid process. Council has the authority to do that. It doesn't handcuff council in any way. It just gives council flexibility to not go to that expense. And it is an expense. I think you've told me that the advertisements to do this cost like $2,500 to do the bid notices, something like that. Or there may be other things that cost $2,500. But doing the newspaper advertising can be expensive. And so it saves us that money in the future. Second thing is, we do have, we continue to have the ability to use the bid board for items that cost more than $100,000 without having to go through the competitive. And so that doesn't, there's not been any legislative change that says the bid board is no longer available for items under $100,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance O 2025-013, Amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-180, Budget Adjustments and Purchasing Policy to Authorize or Increase From $50,000 To $100,000 in Minimum Requirement for Formal Competitive Bidding in accordance with state law. This would be an administrative ordinance and be effective immediately. Do we have a motion? Yes? Oh, okay, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Lee. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2025-009?
Well, Mayor, if we're on 8.4, then the first action is the ordinance...
Yeah, well, what Lee is calling...
And then the second one is a resolution.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, I think it should be ordinance 2025-013.
Okay. Okay, I called forward the wrong motion. Bill briefed 8.4, even though I called forward 8.5. Without objection, we will open back up for a motion on item 8.4 and ask Bill if there's anything else that he would like to amplify. Discussion Action Ordinance O 2025-013, Amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-180, Budget Adjustments and Purchasing Policy to Authorize An Increase in the Minimum Requirement for Open Bidding for, from 200, from $50,000 to $100,000 in accordance with state law as an administrative... Bill, is there anything that you'd like to amplify on what you previously said when I called forward 8.5?
No, sir, no, sir, I think it's all good.
Okay, Lee, are we okay? Okay, okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance O 2025-013, Amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-180, Budget Amendments and Purchasing Policy to Authorize An Increase From $50,000 To $100,000 in Minimum Requirement for Formal Competitive Bidding in accordance with state law as an administrative ordinance. Okay, we have a motion from Lee. We have a second. We have a second from Conrad. Oh, second from Buddy. We're now open for discussion? There being, there being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Okay, item 8.5 now. Discussion Action Resolution R 2025-009, Amending City Policy Number 2 Budget Adjustments and Purchasing Policy to Authorize An Increase in the Minimum Requirement for Open Bidding From $50,000 To $100,000 in accordance with state law. Bill?
This is essentially mirrors the ordinance. But we've, we've had the purchasing policy pulled out as a separate purchasing policy for some, quite some time. And so we have a listing of one through, you know, 25 policies. This happens to be one of them. And then we take that policy and we stick it in our ordinances so people can actually look at it in two places. You can go to your Muni code and look at the ordinances. Or on our website, we've got a listing of all the policies. This policy is listed for, and is made separately so we can find it easier. But there's no specific briefing changes than what I've already briefed. It just primarily changes the purchasing power from $50,000 to $100,000 for formal competitive bidding process.
Okay, thank you. Lee? I want to make sure I'm doing 8.5 this time. Okay, okay, just want to make sure that I, I'm not making the same mistake again. Okay, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2025-009, Amending City Policy Number 2 Budget Adjustments and Purchasing Policy to Authorize An Increase From $50,000 To $100,000 in Minimum Requirements for Formal Competitive Bidding in accordance with state law?
So moved.
We have a motion from Maggie?
Second.
We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion? There, Conrad?
Just real quick, when's the last time this was changed, I guess? Or it wasn't in existence?
I don't know the answer, but it was well before I took over 12 years ago.
Yeah, I think that when I was on city council through 2004, it went from 25 to 50. So I think it's about 20 years old. Well behind inflation, in fact. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R 2025-009, Amending City Policy Number 2 Budget Adjustments and Purchasing Policy to Authorize An Increase From $50,000 To $100,000 in Minimum Requirements for Formal Competitive Bidding in accordance with state law. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Item 8.6, Discussion Action Resolution R 2025-010, Establishing a Fund Description and Spending Restrictions on the Community Engagement and Enhancement Fund. Bill?
So council, during the budget workshops, the ramp up to the budget, for the first time, we had to address what we expect to get is additional revenue from our electronic billboards. And so there was a lot of discussion from there. The consensus from council was to create a community engagement enhancement fund. And then we had further discussion into how do we then place a self-imposed restriction on that, identifying some of the items that we want to use it for. So it's not used for basic maintenance and operations. So I think there's a slide coming up here. What we thought we would do is basically validate that by passing a resolution, which makes it official, it's official records. And it talks about what the description of the fund is, the wherashes as to why we're doing it, and some of the, some of the information. So we, again, we decided on community engagement enhancement fund and we've added the dash restricted so that we self-impose that restriction on us. It allows for the accounts, and accounts for the proceeds of the subleasing and the leasing of the city land owned or leased to billboard companies for the purpose of erecting operational digital billboards. And if you drove along 1604, you'll see that the first one is well on the way of being built. So expenditures from the fund are to specifically approved by the city council during the annual budgeting process and may be amended during the fiscal year for the general purposes of community engagement and enhancement. Next slide. And so it further goes to say expenditures from this fund can be for capital or non-capital projects that promote community engagement and enhance the city's residential community. And this fund is not for the regular maintenance and the operations of the city. It may be used to pay for city services, city-sponsored events that directly engage with the community as well as reimbursement of capital improvement projects used to promote, for example, hiking and biking, nature trails, facilitate community engagement. So it is classified as restricted for the community enhancement engagement, things that you've, we've talked about before in the workshop. Is there another slide? Yeah, so final section of this. The city council of Chavano Park advises future city councils to follow its guidance in future fiscal and budgetary decision-making in accordance with the Texas state law regulating restricted funds. So again, we always follow Texas law doing that, but this puts an emphasis on that and encourages that use. Makes it very clear of what your intent is.
Thank you very much, Bill. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2025-010, Establishing a Fund Description and Spending Restrictions on the Community Engagement and Enhancement Fund Restricted?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. Lee?
I just have a comment. That's one of the best crafted pieces of prose I've heard in a long time in this chamber. Congratulations, that's...
It was a team effort. We had some help.
Lee, Pete?
So Bill, have we received any funds yet for those signs?
We have not.
Okay, so we don't have to, all the funds will, once this is established, all those funds will go in there?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? There being no further discussion, we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2025-010, Establishing a Fund Description and Spending Restrictions on the Community Engagement and Enhancement Fund Restricted? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We're now to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion from Lee and a second from Conrad. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned.